All right, we are right at seven o'clock, so I'll call tonight's meeting to order. And Dan, can we have a roll call, please?
Uh, Councilor Valento.
Here.
Councilor Beistrum. Councilor Munson.
Here.
Councilor Husnick.
Here.
And Mayor Bain.
Here. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and parole.
Council, we have an agenda before you this evening. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
A motion that we approve the agenda for tonight.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and agenda is approved. Our next item this evening is open forum. Open forum is any interested parties' opportunity to speak to council on any topic of your choosing. Is there any entries for open forum this evening? No, and nobody online either? All right. We will bring meeting back to council. And council, this evening, you have consent agenda items six A through six P before you. I will entertain a motion or any changes.
Mayor Bain, a motion that we approve consent agenda six A through P is in papa.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and motion carries. Moving on to our regular agenda, our first item this evening is seven A, the Scandia Heritage Alliance and Scandia Arts and Heritage Center presentation and approval of letter of support. We have joining us, with us this evening, my counterpart in Scandia, Mayor Christine Mayewski. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
And ultimately, the request will be for council to approve a letter of support.
Yes.
And Christine, we look forward to hearing more. Thank you for being here.
It's my pleasure. Thanks very much for having me. Good evening, Mayor Bain, Council Member Husnick, Beistrum, Munson, and Valento. I am here this evening to ask your support for, hold on. There we go. I'm here to ask your support for the Water Tower Barn Arts and Heritage Center. It is a joint project between the Scandia Heritage Alliance and the city of Scandia. I'm happy to say that we have just learned, or recently learned, that the Water Tower Barn project is on the governor's bonding recommendation list. Our goal now is to stay on the list and to make it through to appropriations. As our neighboring community, your support will be very helpful. The Scandia Heritage Alliance is a 501(c)(3) formed in 2018. Its mission is to preserve and celebrate Scandia's rich history, culture, arts, and rural character. This fits very well with the city's comprehensive plan, which emphasizes similar values. It is a collaboration between the city of Scandia and the Scandia Heritage Alliance, the project is, with the city council giving its unanimous support of our project. We, Scandia, are in the heart of the St. Croix River Valley. What is our claim to fame? I think you know it. We are, we are the site of the first Swedish settlement in the state of Minnesota. While technically a twin-city suburb, Scandia is a rural community with the St. Croix River as our eastern border and a small population of about 4,000 residents, we're proud of our agricultural roots which live on today. Our community is rich in heritage. We have the Swedish Gamal Garden Museum, four buildings on the National Register of Historic Places, and a monument erected in 1900 to honor the state's first Swedish settlers. Notably, about 3,000 international tourists at this time visit Gamal Garden each year. We are, as is, I will say, Forest Lake also, a perfect location for tourism. Given our close proximity to the Twin Cities and our Scandia's regional attractions like the William O'Brien State Park, the Gateway Bike Trail, and the St. Croix River, North Woods and Waters is seeking to designate the St. Croix River Valley as a national heritage area, which, if that's done, the University of Minnesota projects would increase tourism in our area from the current $640,000 visitors, forty thousand visitors a year, to about 1.9 million visitors a year after 10 years. Additional tourism venues in the St. Croix River Valley will have significant positive impact for our region and our state. Our Hearts and Heritage Center project pivots around the restored historic Water Tower Barn, once an iconic structure that stood in Scandia's village center. This historic barn played an important role in Scandia's early 20th century economy. It was built in about 1895 by the Scandia mercantile owner to provide water to local businesses and residents. When the, when the building's former owner, the Hilltop Water Company, decided to tear it down, we worked with them to hire a barn restoration company to carefully dismantle the structure and to market for future reconstruction. We believe the building may be the state's only remaining tank house. And we're working closely with the state's Historic Preservation Office to seek placement on the National Register of Historic Places. We currently have a $10,000 legacy grant to research the tank house engineering, history, and the distinctive design of the Water Tower Barn. Why is this not moving? There it goes. Okay. We do plan to recreate and demonstrate the operational tank house. This includes showcasing the elevated wood tank, a working windmill, and an old-fashioned hand-water pump where visitors can fill water bottles. Through museum displays, we'll tell the story of Scandia's evolution from Native American lands to agrarian farm community to a small center of commerce. The Water Tower Barn was central to the development of Scandia's commercial center. It is our belief that the immigrant stories we share with families and neighbors will engender compassion and unity. Like many of today's immigrants, the Swedish, Scandia Swedish settlers and ancestors moved from an impoverished nation, seeking a better life for their children and grandchildren. They faced extreme hardship and prejudice in the New World, but their descendants have thrived. These tales help to recreate understanding and draw parallels between the many shared immigrant experiences. Interest has been growing steadily in gaining a fuller understanding of our region's pre-settlement history. Prior to the arrival of the first Swedish immigrants, Scandia was home to Dakota and Ojibwe people. Scandia Heritage Alliance aims to celebrate and raise awareness of the culture and stories of the indigenous peoples of the St. Croix River Valley. In addition to a museum, the barn will serve as an event center, seating 60 to 80 people for small music, theater, and film productions. We envision, in addition to holding art shows, art classes, youth day camps focused on the arts and environment, and joint events with other local cultural organizations such as the Marine Community Library, the Gamal Garden Museum, and the Art Barn in Osceola. We also have an outdoor amphitheater planned, which will seat 260 people from music, theater, and film productions. No nearby communities in the St. Croix Valley have an amphitheater, so we foresee this as a regional asset for the valley and the Twin Cities. A water feature, water play feature, will be attraction for local families, as well as those visiting William O'Brien State Park. The Gateway Trail will soon connect downtown Scandia to William O'Brien and will be a short bike ride away. The Arts and Heritage Center sits, will sit between three wetlands. Our plan includes a wetland interpretive trail, and also, or it will go, the trail, rather, will go around and across the wetland. We also will have an outland overlook. Our water focus will provide an opportunity to educate visitors about the importance and interdependence between our local wetlands, lakes, streams, aquifers, and the St. Croix River, all vital features of our beautiful city. And of course, our water conservation message will feature the story of our most famous resident, Vice President Walter Mondale, who was instrumental in designating the St. Croix as a wild and scenic river. I don't know if you knew that Walter Mondale's first date with his wife was actually on the St. Croix River, very close to Scandia. And he had a home or made a home in Scandia for many years. The bonding request is phase one of a two-phase project. Our original plan also included a second building, arts building, which we moved, however, to a second phase since it had a projected cost of over $5 million. The above proposal is what is in the governor's bonding bill and for what we are asking your letter of support. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah. And do you have any questions? I'd be happy to answer.
Council, any questions for Mayor Mayewski tonight?
No, I don't.
Questions? I don't think so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again for being here. Council, the ask this evening is council recommendation for a letter of support. Mayor Mayewski, I can appreciate the challenge, but also the great opportunity that comes with submitting those bonding requests, and we wish you all the best in that. So I am happy to make a motion that council approve a letter of support for the Scandia bonding request.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, and motion carries. Good luck with your request.
Thank you very much.
All right. With that, we will move on to agenda item seven B, which is a resolution accepting donation for Mayor Natha Assembly of God Church and Chief Peterson.
Yeah, Mayor and City Council members, good evening. What I have for you today is a resolution accepting a donation from Mayor Natha Assembly of God Church in the amount of $1,000. I want to publicly thank Mayor Natha Assembly of God Church for their generous donation to the police department and further continued support. Staff recommendation is for the city to accept the donation with gratitude.
Thank you, Chief. And I would motion that council approve resolution 01242201 with gratitude.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, and motion carries. Our next item this evening is a resolution for depository of funds designation. And Sandy, I think you're walking us through this.
Yes. This is something that's required. Every year, we have to designate by resolution our depositories, which is basically the banks and financial institutions we are using. And the four that are listed are the ones that we have used in the past: Midwest One Bank, US Bank, Northland Securities, and PMA Financial Network. And all of these will be, continue to be used for this coming year.
Counsel, any questions for Sandy this evening? And resolution, I would, so I would motion that council approve resolution 01242202.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, and motion carries. Our next item this evening is seven D, the Belts Park Master Plan Authorization to obtain quotes. And Jamie, I think you're walking us through this.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm here tonight to share a brief update on our Belts Park Master Plan and guide you through some of our next steps in this, and seeking approval tonight to obtain some quotes as we move forward in the project. So just as provided in the staff memo, we've completed the master plan phase of this project, which we're excited to be at that stage. During this process, we did solicit community feedback, surveys, open house, vetted through the Parks, Trails, and Lakes Commission many times along with city staff. So really happy with the vision we have for the improvements to Belts Park. I also outlined many of the benefits to the community that this project will provide. A key one is accessibility. I've had people comment that they can't even access the park via wheelchair. So we're going to make some really important accessibility improvements to access the park and throughout the park, connect to different amenities throughout. And we're really focusing on improving existing facilities. So we're going to repair and replace some of our athletic courts, the pickleball tennis courts, basketball courts. We're also going to, a key community request was improving the warming house structure that's there and turning that more into a park pavilion that can be used year-round, so it'll serve as a warming house. We'll also have some indoor space to rent for small family gatherings and also some outdoor expanded capacity for seating as well. There's a big need in the community for something of that nature, for community gatherings other than Lakeside Memorial Park. So that'll be, another nice feature to that will be actual, having bathrooms and water fountains. So that was a really well-sought-after request by the community and will be a really nice improvement. And then lastly, just a key thing that came through in all of our community input sessions was just having features and amenities for all ages and abilities. So we're going to upgrade our playground equipment to have inclusive playground features. And we're also going to make sure that we have equipment from, for ages two to 13-plus. So we're really missing the mark. We need some more teen amenities and adding a ninja warrior obstacle course kind of equipment will really be something new and different for the community and I think will be a really good benefit. So those are some of the key improvements and changes that you'll see with this project. Being that we have completed the master plan phase of this, we are going to start moving into the implementation phase. And a part of that is applying for some funding to help us support the project as we go. And we do have one opportunity coming up, which is the Minnesota DNR Outdoor Recreation Grant. So we are looking at submitting an application for that, for this project, starting, the deadline is March 31st. So we are just tonight looking for your approval to continue just obtaining quotes at this time. That would be for playground equipment, playground surfacing, and then the park pavilion, which will be integral parts of this grant application. An official RFP will be submitted later in the year, so this will come back before you. But this gives us the opportunity to start fine-tuning the quote that we do have and start selecting more specific equipment for the project, for the grant application. As noted, to conclude, we will continue on our implementation plan and bring forward a full plan on, on what that's going to look like as we continue to identify grants and other funding sources to implement this project in the future. So with that, just seeking council support to move forward with obtaining the quotes on the playground equipment, surfacing, and park building as part of the master plan. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Yeah, any kind of a guestimate on cost? I mean, total project, start to finish?
Yep. So we do have a cost estimate. Original was about 1.8 million, so it's going to be around that. 1.8 to 2 million is kind of the first dive in at, you know, high-level engineering costs. So now we're going to start really fine-tuning that to see what actual costs will be and aligning resources through our park dedication fund, community support. I know we've received one contribution from the Rotary, Rotary Club, and again, seeking different grant opportunities. And likely, we'll see if we have to do this in a phased construction approach, which we'll identify here as we move forward.
I see in the materials, of course, they just escaped me, I see in the materials a planned, projects may begin like October 2022. Is it still undetermined if that is full scope or partial scope? Does that kind of depend on what you find with both the grants and pricing? Or what's the thought process on determining kind of the scope, at least to start if it's phased?
A great question. So we do need to get into the implementation phase to identify some of the costs a little more specifically. And we'll consult with Bolton and Mank, who we've been working with on this, and take a recommendation on what would be, you know, if there needs to be that phased approach or not. It's really going to come down to the resources we have available. If we can fund it all at one time, or if we can't, then what would be the most appropriate first phase, whether that's reconstructing the basketball courts, pickleball courts, et cetera. It's really going to depend on some of the work that's going to be needed to be done. So that'll be determined as we continue to move forward and get these quotes provided to the, to staff.
Mayor Bain, I don't have a question. I just wanted to take a moment and thank Jamie for your leadership on this work in the Parks, Lakes, and Trails Committee. I know it was a lot of work, a lot of discussion to get it, even to a master plan to this, to this stage. And I love the inclusivity, that's a hard word to say this evening, of both age and ability. I think that that's awesome. And also, the ability to use the warming house year-round. I think that's really cool, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I know we had some delays with the whole COVID pandemic, but I'm really happy to be at the stage that we're at here and moving forward. So thank you.
Planned, and I know there's a lot of unknowns at this point, and so I don't necessarily need a full response now, but I think it'd be, it'd be good to, as we consider next phases and we start actually thinking about groundbreaking, an additional, like, kind of communication plan of just communicating the timeline, what's coming, when. And again, I appreciate that, you know, those details aren't yet known, but there's been a fair amount of input to this point. It'd be good to just make sure we're reaching back out as part of the actual execution plan.
That sounds good. I think that we can do that on our website pretty easily and keep going with social media as we take these next steps and get there, so.
Any other questions, comments? I'll just echo Councilmember Munson's comments and thanks for all of your work on this, Jamie, and also Parks, Trails, and Lakes and staff. I know this has been in the making for a long time, so it's good to see that we're actually to this next spot of getting some quotes and potentially a timeline nailed down. So it's good, it's good to see.
Thank you.
Mayor Bain, are you ready for a motion?
Yeah, I think so.
I make a motion to authorize the city to obtain quotes for the Belts Park Master Plan.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, and motion carries. Our next item this evening, Accounting Administrative Assistant One, new hire. And Kim, I think you're walking us through this.
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mayor Bain and council members. As you know, we had some vacancies in the Finance Department, and I'm happy to come forward and stuff that a, three, we had three final candidates that were interviewed, and a conditional offer was made to Tina Burmeister, contingent upon the city council. Tina's with us here tonight. Just give her, you know, an example of the great team that I work with and, and everybody at Forest Lake here. So I am recommending to the council the approval of hiring Tina for the position of the Accounting and Administrative Assistant One at a level grade five, step one. If you have any questions, Marissa or Tina, we'd be happy to answer.
Fantastic. Thank you, Kim. Counsel, any questions this evening?
All right. I, no questions, and we, this is a position, an important position that's in a transition period as we are transitioning and continue, kind of wrapping up the transition and moving into what ordinary operations are going to look like for utility billing. So I am happy to support this position tonight and would motion that council approve the Assistant One position as outlined in our memo and by Kim.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, and motion carries.
Thank you. And for my second motion tonight, we have vacant position for the Accounting and Administrative Assistant Two, previously titled the Senior Accounting Clerk. After going through recommend, or the recruitment for the position, a conditional offer of employment was made to Katie Smith, contingent upon city council approval. Katie also joins us here tonight. Katie has previous private sector experience in both payroll and accounting, and if approved, her start date will be February 14th. And as I forgot to mention, my other proposal that Tina will be starting on the 31st. So my recommendation to the council is approving hiring Katie Smith for the position of Accounting and Administrative Assistant Two at level grade six, step one.
Fantastic. Thank you, Kim. Counsel, any questions for Kim this evening? Hearing none. I also will motion for the, that council approve the Accounting Administrative Assistant Two position.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, and motion carry. And Tina and Katie, welcome aboard. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Bain and council members. I greatly appreciate it.
Our pleasure. All right. Moving on to item seven G, Boards and Commissions Appointments. And for this evening, we have two appointments for council's consideration. For the Planning Commission, both Susan Young and Kevin Miller have agreed to continue their service and serve on another term. And with that, I would motion that council approve the appointments for Susan Young and Kevin Miller to the Planning Commission.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, and motion carries. I believe we have Airport Commission appointments coming forward at our next meeting, and then we should be good for the day, good for the time being. I will say, we do still continue to have a vacancy that will open up February 1st on the Planning Commission. And so if you know, great candidates or people who are interested, have them apply online. And we are looking to fill that position as quickly as we can. So. All right. With that, moving on to our final action item this evening, seven H, which is council liaison appointments. From my perspective, our current appointments are working very well. I think we've got great representation. I haven't heard of one, anybody looking to exchange seats. And so wanted to just open it up for discussion to see if there were any switches that we wanted to make. Otherwise, I would move that we continue with liaison appointments as is, but open to discussion.
Me personally, I'm fine with the appointments I have, so.
Excellent.
The School Board, Airport Commission, for me.
So with that, I would motion that liaison appointments remain as is for 2022.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, and motion carries. And I am happy to revisit that at any point. So if either subject matter or scheduling becomes, if there's interest in changing, I'm happy to revisit that and we can, we can bring that forward. So let us know if something's not working. Okay, that concludes our regular agenda this evening. We do not have any workshop sessions for council tonight, and we will move right into staff updates, and we'll start with Dan.
Mayor, members of council, just want to remind everyone that tomorrow night is the Invest in Community Engagement Session for the Downtown Plan Directives. That meeting will be held here at the city center from 7:00 to 8:30 up in the community room. For those that don't want to attend in person, we also have a Zoom option that'll be live at the same time. So you can sign up for the Zoom option on the city's website. Feedback, right now, we also have an online feedback portal that's open right now. As of last week, we had over 100 site visits. And that was pre, there's been a, kind of a lot of push recently to get, to promote that. So that was pre, sort of that big PR push. We had over 100 site visits and feedback on the directives is coming back in. The slide deck, for those that want to preview the information for tomorrow, is on the investinforestlake.com website. So the slide deck and the directives are all outlined on there. On that feedback portal, I believe will stay open through February. So if you miss the meeting tomorrow or if residents miss the meeting and still want to provide feedback, they can do so online through that portal. But again, that meeting is tomorrow night from 7:00 to 8:30 here at the city center, and I'd be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Any questions for Dan this evening? All right. And that meeting has been posted with a quorum of council potentially present, and so I hope we see all of you as well.
I can't make it tomorrow night, I'm sorry.
At a future meeting. All right. Peter.
Your Honor, no update.
Excellent. Patrick.
Just a couple of things. Just to remind the council, we have a planning commission this Wednesday. We continue to be busy with new development and subdivisions, and we'll have a preliminary plat for Hidden Creek, a concept review for Teetz Farm, and a concept review for Goodview Preserve. With that, we are also, we also posted the Community Development Director position again. This time, we did it nationally to see if we could get a better pool. So that closes at the end of February, and we will have Finance Director interviews this week.
Very good. Any questions for Patrick this evening? All right. Ryan.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Just to recap on Highway 97 with MINDOT, so we're going to start re-engaging with them on next steps. So staff will be remotely meeting meeting with them February first to talk about where we're going with Highway ninety-seven and, you know, what's coming along with that, and then our next steps with public engagements. Obviously, we've talked about and have seen some concepts with the introduction of a median in portions of ninety-seven, so, you know, we'll want to obviously start talking about that, and then, you know, then the discussion also with the roundabout potentially at Fenway and Highway ninety-seven, and how committed is the city to, you know, that portion of the project too, so MINDOT can get better guidance moving forward. So we'll meet with them February first, and then I'll give you guys an update on that, but then you guys probably will be starting to be involved in some meetings shortly after that, in the next couple of months, as that project moves forward. They did go through some staffing issues, they were restaffed up, maternity leave, repositioning within the organization, so, you know, that's kind of the law has happened to, and MINDOT still required to work from home instead of reporting to the office, so it's been a little difference in communication and moving stuff forward. I did have it noted, as Pat's outlined, you know, with the Planning Commission meeting already starting this Wednesday, I highly encourage you guys to really start paying attention to what's being discussed at these meetings moving forward. There's going to be a lot of information moving very fast, more development, you guys have seen since the late nineties, so the more you can pick up at those meetings and know what's being discussed about there, it'll only help your decisions here at city council level, so I encourage you to get involved with those Planning Commission meetings and just listen and follow along what's being discussed, a part of those project approvals and conditions that we're working through in each of those projects, because every single project has something unique with it that we're working through to get to the final approval process. Last highlights, so our Polar Plunge page is live now, so if you guys want to donate to TEFLA, that's who we're jumping for again this year, so it looks like the momentum's starting to heat up on that page too, so if you're not jumping, donate to our team. That's all that happens, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Ryan this evening?
Thank you for jumping, pledge coming, and also, thanks for the reminder on watching those Planning Commission meetings, that's great detail and good opportunity for us to absorb and be ready to make decisions once they hit council, so great, great feedback. Chief Peterson.
Number one, I want to give a shout-out to Ryan, I used to be on the board for eight years with TEFLA, and we definitely do appreciate everything that Bolton and Mank and Ryan has done to raise funds for TEFLA. On behalf of Public Works, the Fire Department, and Police Department, all three of our departments have been really busy the last couple of weeks handling vehicles off the roadway accidents, unfortunately, because of the, of the cold, and I just want to remind all of our community members to slow down, be very careful, the roads might look like they're clear, but there could be ice, snow pack, ice-packed snow on those roadways, and when the weather drops below, I believe it's ten degrees, is that right, Ryan? That the salt and the chemicals don't activate, and so you just need to be really careful, especially on nights like tonight, that's going to get really cold. But other than that, no other updates unless you have questions for me.
Thank you, Chief, any questions for Chief? All right, Jamie.
All right, just one quick update, one of our committees, the Fenway Advisory Committee, is transitioning to an Athletic Facilities Advisory Committee, so we are kicking off our first meeting this Thursday. It is, it's a soft launch to transitioning, so we're going to set some groundwork on what the goals are, objectives, key players and such, so we are having that first meeting. I will contact our, my liaison representatives for that. We are going to, right now, we're going to meet quarterly, so January, April, July, and October, and then additional meetings as needed, but it's really a good opportunity to have conversations more broadly along, around all of our athletic facilities, increase utilization, make sure all user groups are represented, have an opportunity for the fields, so I think it's, it's going to be a great transition and looking forward to getting that started. If that otherwise, happy to answer any questions.
Perfect. Jamie and Councilmember Munson and Councilmember Beestrom as well, we're ready to kind of transition away from the structure that we have now with the flaw advisory and move, happy to do that, let's maybe keep it until that is up and ready, up and running. I know that the Senior Center Board is also kind of in transition, and so whenever we're ready to change those assignments, let's make that happen, so.
Perfect, thank you.
And thanks for the good work in getting that kicked off, so I think it's a nice, nice move forward. Thanks.
All right, Sandy.
Nothing to add tonight unless there's any questions for me.
Any questions for Sandy? All right, and Kim.
Nothing to add either unless the board or, yeah, it's any questions for me?
All right, with that, we'll come back to council updates, Councilmember Munson.
Yes, I attended the Planning Commission meeting, and I would concur with Administrator Casey and Ryan that there is a lot on the agendas coming up, there's a packed agenda Wednesday night, and like Ryan said, a lot of, a lot of development, and it's, it is, if you can watch it, I would recommend it because it's confusing. They all are named, similar names, and they all do have something kind of unique to them, so I would encourage that, and then I just wanted to just publicly thank Dennis Batty, he is not continuing his role on the Planning Commission, and just want to thank him for, for all of his work and feedback he's provided, I think he'll be missed.
Great. Excellent, Councilmember Husnick.
No updates tonight.
Councilmember Valento.
No updates for me.
All right, just a quick update for myself on, just wanted to echo Councilmember Munson's thoughts and thank Commissioner Batty for his service on the Planning Commission, I think he's been on for about ten years, and has a great, great perspectives and really appreciate his service to the community. Also appreciation for Dennis Miller and Susan Young for continuing to serve on the Planning Commission. Those packets are by far the largest packets that we produce, any of our groups produce, it takes a lot of time to get through the packets and meeting prep, and then those are long meetings, and so we just really appreciate their service, so. With that, we are at the end of our planned agenda this evening, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So move.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody, good night.